Twenty-second meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors for Order. Will the General Counsel please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Baumright.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
And also our student representative Jasmine Pearson.
Here.
Welcome, we have a forum.
Thank you, and as always, great to have you with us Jasmine. The item four, four point one modification of agenda order to facilitate public comment during virtual meetings.
The order of current items, or the district's general counsel recommends that the board modify the order of agenda items under Regulation fourteen twenty R during the time period that it is holding meetings virtually. Public comment should be placed at the beginning of the agenda after the adoption of the consent agenda.
Okay, um, do we need to take action on item four point one?
Uh, we should call for a motion to approve the agenda item of reordering the agenda.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt item four point one?
I so move.
My second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item four point two, motion to amend the agenda, um, or as it's been presented.
Excellent, and then I do have an update on the reason for reordering the agenda. If Tom and Kevin could throw up a slide real quick for us. At your direction, members of the board, uh, we have been exploring technology in order to allow for video, uh, or live video conferencing, um, public comment participation. And so thanks to Dan Vopel for putting this up, and you can go to the next slide. Uh, thank you very much, uh, to Tracy and to Kevin, uh, for putting together this process which we're going to test tonight. Uh, if you go to the next slide, you'll see what the new process is. So this will now be on our agenda going forward. But if citizens want to participate in the virtual board meeting, they'll need to request to speak by six P M. On the Wednesday prior to the school board meeting. Um, there's the address that will be on the agenda, and then the citizen will need to download Microsoft Teams. Uh, the citizen will wait in the lobby, there's a virtual lobby that's going on behind the scenes of this, uh, meeting. And, uh, that's why we wanted to move the public comment to the beginning of the agenda so that citizens will still be able to, uh, view the rest of the business meeting without being stuck in the lobby. Um, so when the public comment period begins, um, then the board secretary will admit the citizen onto our teams meeting, and they'll be able to have a countdown clock allowing for a three-minute public comment. The time period might be, uh, changed if we have a number of speakers. So we're testing this out tonight. Um, thank you very much to our citizen who's been, uh, watching this process and development, and so I hope it goes well tonight. Um, and thank you very much.
Okay, now, all those in favor of adopting item four point one, signify by saying aye. I'm, I'll just ask, we already took a vote on this, but since the presentation just happened, we're gonna do it one more time. So all those in favor of adopting item four point one, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is adopted. So moving on to item four point two, the motion to the amend the agenda as it's been presented. Is there a motion to?
I have motion.
Point two.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is adopted. So we will move on to item five, members of the public wishing to address the board. You'll know, um, following, um, Ms. Truwell's comment, we have two options, submit public comment now. This one, live option that we just overviewed. Um, and then the option that we had been using will continue to stand. So members of the public wishing to submit written comment, please continue to do so twenty-four hours before the board meeting. And those written comments will be attached to the agenda and provided to board members in advance of the meeting, so we'll have a chance to read those. So we'll begin with public comment. We have one person tonight, Superintendent Santoro.
Yes, we do. Um, I'd like to have Rebecca, introduce Rebecca Padilla. And she is speaking regarding the H A C and Schoology.
Welcome, Ms. Padilla, you have three minutes to give your public comment, starting now. Thank you for being with us.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. Uh, greetings Superintendent and Tacoma School members. My name is Rebecca Padilla, and I'm a parent of two Tacoma Public Schools students. A seventh grader at First Creek Middle School and a ninth grader at Tacoma School of the Arts. I'm also a former district employee and worked as a family advocate and head start for three years in Tacoma, and also served on the district equity team. I currently work in E cap, um, as a family support in federal way, public schools. I'm here today to voice my concerns regarding the introduction of Schoology that looks to be replacing the Home Access Center. I learned of this through my youngest Carlos, who is never short on words about how he feels about remote learning. He said, Mom, just as we learned Microsoft Teams and Hack, and now we're switching to something called Schoology. I hate online school, and all they do is make it more confusing, he says. When I got the email for my new login codes for my two students, I thought, wow, he wasn't kidding, this is kind of confusing. I wondered, why did we not start the school year with Schoology? And why would the district ask students, parents, and educators to change platforms like this? Two months into the school year, right, as we're figuring it all out. Comments has started, and I began to look online for my students' grades. Some grades were in the hack, and no grades were in Schoology, and it seemed that neither one knew what the other was doing. I am so grateful to Soda for his, who has been so prompt in communication with me and patient with me as I tried to navigate this new way of learning. In closing, I'd like to say, just as previous times I've come before you, I come here not only as a parent of my own children, but also for the parents who don't have the language to speak like I do. For the parents that have to work multiple jobs to now pay the internet bill, that's an essential part of our children's education. I worry the impact of yet another transition may be greater for our most vulnerable students and families, not to mention the added stress to the educators for already working so hard. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for your dedication to all Tacoma students.
Thank you. That's our only speaker. Thank you so much, Ms. Padilla, you did wonderfully. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that there are no additional comments, we'll move on to item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, recognition of Gold Star Partner Award to Degrees of Change.
Community. Amanda, you're muted.
Okay, good, good evening, everybody. Sorry about that. Um, this is Amanda Scott Thomas, Director of the Community Partnership Office. Super excited to be here with you tonight to present our first, um, Gold Star of this new school year. Uh, and it is my pleasure and recognition of a Gold Star Community Partner, uh, to recognize degrees of change. Uh, Tacoma Public Schools, as you know, we define partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the district, and the greater Tacoma community. Uh, partners are committed to supporting students and student academic success and the success of the whole child. We know that our partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life, uh, for our entire Tacoma community. And when it comes to student success, T P S recognizes that schools can't do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, resources, uh, for T P S students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies and honors and gives thanks to a community partner who has gone, uh, far to make a difference by doing what's best for kids. So for tonight, we want to recognize, uh, degrees of change whose mission is to prepare, uh, diverse homegrown leaders to succeed in college and use their degrees to build a more vibrant and equitable community. Degrees of Change partners with T P S, uh, other community organizations, colleges, and employers to provide a cohort, cohort-based learned, uh, leadership training. Uh, college success support, they do career development and alumni programming to underrepresented students who desire to lead and serve in their home communities. It's both a national backbone organization, local, uh, direct service provider in Tacoma, Seattle. Degrees of Change provides and uses research-based programming for education, for cutting-edge evaluation, uh, data tools, and their operation systems. They've been a longstanding partner with, uh, Tacoma Public Schools, and we just wanted to recognize them, uh, for all the work that they did. They had a huge event for our students that happened right, um, that was scheduled to happen right after the pandemic broke out, and they were able to pivot and still, uh, put in that work for students, and we just wanted to recognize them, uh, for their, uh, contribution and their support to Tacoma Public Schools and our students and families. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the recipient of the award, uh, which you will be receiving, uh, via mail. It's a plaque of the Gold Star Award, and you will get that in your mail, and I think we have Tim, uh, to accept the award and have a few words.
If you're speaking, Tim, you're on mute.
This is Tracy, if you've been in that room, but now I don't see him on the list of people who are in reading.
Okay. Okay, well, we can just follow up and make sure that Tim and the Degrees of Change team get their recognition. And I'll just say briefly, I, um, just thank them for all that they do in the community. My own personal story with Tim and Degrees of Change, Tim was teaching zero hour statistics my senior year in high school. So my relationship with him and his contributions to the community go way back to my senior year when he was part of, he and Steve Shane, who everyone who's ever gotten a scholarship in Tacoma in the last twenty years knows. They were really instrumental in getting me down to Willamette for college, so I appreciate Tim and his commitment to nurturing the next generation, and think that this is a great award for them to receive. And I just wanna say too, that, um, in the world of Zoom and Teams meetings, many of us have been on calls recently where people's children show up in the background. So to anyone who's participating in the meeting tonight who has real babies or fur babies who are in their homes, we welcome all of your participation. So some of you in the community may have heard dogs barking, but they're part of this T P S family, and they're welcome.
I do apologize, I have a new puppy, and I'm, I, I admit, I confess, it was a pandemic purchase. Uh, and he did not start by barking until I got online, so I apologize for that, but yes, my new fur baby is in the background.
And any kids who show up in our backgrounds are welcome too. So, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Okay, moving on to item number six, I'm sorry, gotta get back, seven, um, the superintendent's report, seven point one, construction update.
Yeah, we thought it was time for you to get an update to hear about what's going on in our, uh, construction world. So we've asked, uh, um, Morris Aldridge to give them tonight, and Morris, would you tell us a little bit about what's going on in construction? We know you give us an update, um, every week, but we thought it'd be good for the public to hear.
Well, good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Morris Aldridge, I'm the Executive Director of Plan and Construction. Uh, tonight, we've got an update on Bernie Hunt and Bose. And unfortunately, because of COVID, we haven't been able to have the grand openings that, uh, we have had in the past. So what we're gonna do tonight is show you some photos of both Bernie, show you our progress on Hunt, and then show you Bose Elementary School as well. So Tom, if you could bring up the slides, we can go, we can walk through some of those, uh, and talk a little bit about the projects. So just again, just, just cabinet plan update, uh, next slide. Uh, again, this is, this is, uh, just an overview there of Bernie itself. You can see that, uh, the way the school is developed, there's a lot of wood and a lot of exposed wooden beams, and to a sense to where this, this project actually has been part of a case study, looking at engineered wood, uh, here in the state of Washington as well. Tom, next slide. Uh, this one shows the interior, some of the interior courtyards. Uh, you've got, you've got that there at the very top of this, the front of the building at the bottom, and then they're not, they're reading nooks that are around the building as well, some in the hallways, some in the classrooms. Uh, to be able to give opportunities for kids to learn in multiple locations. And one thing I failed to mention, just, just right off, is this building was designed by, um, a grand hand architect. It's being built by Turner, or was built by, by Turner Construction for us. Uh, next slide, Tom. Uh, this is the front of it, again, you can see that mixed use there where we actually have, uh, the, the exposed wood, got a little bit of brick there, and there's lots of natural light within this facility. Next slide. And there you can, we're coming up now on Bose Elementary School. And Bose Elementary School, uh, and I think it's on one of our slides, was the, is the first design-build K twelve project in the state of Washington. Uh, so our, our next slide, please. And this is some of the notes that are there, you can see there, again, against first K twelve. Uh, the one thing that, that we're probably as proud of as anything else is that we have not had to come back to the board and ask for any additional money. There have been no change orders on this project. Uh, we've moved some money around within the project, but there have been zero change orders within it. Some of the features in this, in this building, uh, it's got community spaces, and these are things that, that were already happening in the old building, so we want to make sure that they continued in the new building. So there is a WICs, there's a WIC room in this building for women, infants, and children. And they're able to access that, uh, from the outside of the building, going into that area without being able, without having to go through the main building itself. The community garden there on the backside of it is, is, is another beautiful space, and then there's lots of play space. Most of you realize too, that this is probably our largest elementary campus site, uh, and we've been able to do, do quite a bit. Uh, it's, it's got, got the STEM focus throughout, uh, holds roughly five hundred and fifty students, and our access control is the same as it is in all of our other buildings, uh, with safety and security, uh, is, is very controlled. So next slide. This shows that main, main entrance, and this building was, uh, designed by B C R A. So what you can see, what they did is that they, they used mimic the, the five oh nine bridge that, so that it just, it again brings in that science and STEM from the moment you walk into the building. Uh, Coresmo Construction, uh, built it for us. Uh, and as you start looking at it, you notice that, you know, it's got, it's got, got some color to pop, but we tried to make sure if we did this building, that it was also simplified from a safety and security standpoint, so there aren't any hidey holes anywhere around this facility. Next slide. Uh, this one is Hunt Middle School. Hunt Middle School, of course, will open, um, I'm losing my mind, 'cause I don't remember the year, in the fall. Uh, but this again is our second design-build project. Uh, this one is being, again, designed by B C R A and is being constructed by Apsher Construction. Next slide. Uh, you can see there, uh, this is, this is actually the main entrance there at the top on this one photo, kind of going in, leading in. Um, it, right now, we're much further along than where, where we're showing right now, but, uh, the roof trusses and all those things are in. Uh, again, as we start going through, it's, it's, it's been fun to work on a middle school campus or a secondary campus to where we start to get that, that science and, and Kate feeling within a building, uh, some of which you don't get to, get a chance to work on when you're doing an elementary school. Uh, and I wanna stress too, and we, as you can see at the bottom of the screen, we've got four women-owned businesses, uh, working on this project. And one of the things we've tried to make sure of as we've gone through all of these projects is to ensure that we continue to make sure that we're reaching the board's goals for minority, women-owned businesses, small businesses, and local businesses, uh, across, across our projects. I will tell you, we have struggled, uh, on the woman-owned side, simply because there aren't very many of, of those within, uh, Tacoma Pierce County. Our next slide. And again, another shot, this is an exterior, uh, of that, looking, looking from the north, looking toward the campus. Next slide. And again, we're finishing up here with Bose, and this is, this is a beautiful shot. Uh, we were able to actually achieve, because of COVID, a little more than what we typically would have. Uh, if you'll notice there in the front of the building, that's an artificial turf field that would have been a grass field. But because we were actually, were able to tear down the old building earlier, we're able to save money on our, on our fees to our contractor, and we took all those fees and put them back into the project. So again, enhancing what's happening within the community. Uh, any questions at all?
Yep, I'm gonna open the board, this is Vice President Baumright.
Yeah, well, thank you, Morris, it's just fabulous to see the development on, uh, on all of these projects, and so proud. And speaking of proud, I wanted to ask, congratulate you and, and the team, the whole team on Mary Lyon Elementary's award for the twenty twenty grand prize, um, from Learning and Design, the magazine about educational design, innovation, and excellence, and, um, just so proud of the work that you guys are doing, and clearly, um, it's, it's, your work is being observed and, uh, nationally and, and commended. So please pass along, um, our kudos to all those that worked on the Mary Lyon, um, Elementary Project, and also all the great work you do. We see from the differences that you showed us, each building has its own personality that reflects a lot of hard work. I know from your end at the beginning, working with community, working with the, the people that work within the building, um, and it's, it's just really showing it's something the, the voters can be very proud of, of, uh, what we're, what you're doing with their resources. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jack, for the honor.
Yeah, thanks, Morris. Um, thanks for also just talking about how responsible the spending has been on this. I think the, the financial piece is really important for everybody to see that, uh, you're not going over on these costs. Um, and I think it's also important for everyone to see the quality of the buildings that their kids and, uh, are gonna be learning in. Um, it's just something that shows our thoughtfulness with community. You know, the most important thing we know are the staff, right, and the curriculum, and what they teach. If you don't have that safe, attractive, and comfortable place that is safe to learn in, then learning doesn't happen very, um, very well. Um, so we gotta have the whole package, but thanks for leading, um, this whole effort, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Director Keating?
Um, yeah, thank you for the presentation, and I echo everything that's already been said. Um, I remember reading in the superintendent report about Bernie, and there was something about the wood, I don't recall exactly, but, um, I'm remembering something about that the wood actually also benefits the students with, um, hearing, um, uh, hearing loss, or is hearing, um, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, what happens with wood is that a lot of that sound, a lot of the sounds sometimes are a distraction, uh, for our students with hearing impairment. So the more sound that we can actually have be absorbed, instead of bouncing off, makes it, makes it much easier for those students to be able to navigate, uh, throughout a facility. So that, that part of that was, was planned, uh, by, by the team with, as they were going through this, to make sure that we weren't just looking at aesthetics, but it was also what, what is the benefit to the students that are in that building? And that's part of it, uh, with, with the way the wood absorbs sound. And there's some other features that we've done in that building also too, for, for our deaf and hard of hearing students. There are more reader boards in that building than you'll find in any other. Uh, we've actually kind of, kind of stolen some of that idea as we started looking at other campuses so that we are inclusive as we go through for all of our students, to make sure that, that they're not having to get information from someone else that they can get the same information as the other students are getting it through announcements and fire drills and all those things.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, that seemed like an important piece to touch on and share with the public, so thanks again, Morris.
You're welcome.
Um, what you just described about the, um, stealing those things and applying them in other buildings just makes me think of that whole concept of targeted universalism, like when you design for students who need the most support, those design features usually have benefits for us all students. So I just really appreciate you mentioning that. And also, I remember in the early concept designs for Bernie, there was a little attention given to sightlines in the building too, so that students, um, who were needing to read lips could have like a longer, wider range of, um, engagement opportunities. Did some of those design features could carry through to the end of the project, or are there other design elements that you could, um, call out specifically that were carried into the final?
Right, well, I, I, I believe, and I, and I wouldn't hear when that, when those discussions actually occurred, but I can tell you that the team was very, uh, uh, really, really direct about what they were doing to, to benefit students. So there are, there are some nuances within that building that are very different than what you'll see in some of our other facilities. Uh, when, when we got, when you've got the team involved, and in this case, that team included our interpreters and folks that, that were making sure that as they were doing their jobs and talking with kids, that we were, we were setting them up to where it was the best learning environment. Uh, so I, I, I do believe that all those things were carried forward.
Thank you. And then just generally, I just think it's great to see the mix of designs and thinking about Bose and maintaining the access to the WIC clinic, or, and just having separate access, just making it easy for people. I think just the overall design of each of these buildings just emphasizes the fact that these are community assets. So I look forward to seeing how the community uses them. And just lastly, I think that, um, when I think about education generally and think about the conversations that we had with middle school students and high school students last year, a lot of them mentioned like just needing a space to go when they need to take a break. So the inclusion of all like little reading nooks, and I remember even over at, um, one of the other buildings that opened just a couple of years ago, there were just so many different spaces for kids to be, so I just hope that culturally, we shift in ways that really facilitates access to all those spaces. And that, that's not like a nice little reading nook, but there's never any time to go and read in the nook. So I just hope that the design of these buildings responds to where staff and students wanted to go in terms of freedom of movement, and that we keep, um, giving students opportunities to learn in ways that, um, work best for them. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hey, thank you for that.
Our student rep Jasmine wants to make any comment on this or any other topics.
Um, no. It all sounds pretty amazing. I mean, I guess, I go to Sammy, and we recently got a new building. Um, and we also have, like, it's very similar in terms of like the wood, and, um, I know that there was a lot of, um, attention to detail to make sure, like, like, I know that our lights respond to the light outside and like, adjust accordingly. Um, and we have like, seats, um, that are like completely like wooden locks going down. Um, and obviously, we can't be in that building right now, but, um, everyone was super excited about getting that building, and it really improves like, school life, so it's cool to see this happening for, like, the younger grade levels as well.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Morris.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number, uh, seven point two, COVID nineteen states.
So I am just gonna give a brief update, um, to take, um, take you through some of the happenings. Probably you most, you, you mostly know, we've really tried to up our communication, but I thought I'd take this opportunity um, just to catch our, excuse me, our public up to. The first slide, please. The first slide really talks just about what's happening in Pierce County. You can go on to the next one. Uh, COVID nineteen updates, but, um, the first one, the next slide, there you go, thank you, that one's good. Um, to know what's, excuse me, what's going on with the county. Excuse me, and I continue to meet with, uh, Pierce County superintendents on a weekly basis so that we can keep track of what's going on, and certainly in different districts, they're doing some different things. But the main thing we're doing as a county is we're watching the numbers. I think the public's real, um, is, is real familiar and has looked at the decision tree, and if you haven't seen it, you can, I, I think it's on our website. If not, it's definitely on the O S P I website that talks about how we're making decisions about how students go to school. And so unfortunately, what's happening in Pierce County are the numbers of, uh, the disease rate are, um, going up. And so the, the actual decision tree calls for above seventy-five for one hundred thousand, um, through a fourteen-day period means that, um, it moves you into the high category. So, um, anyway, that means that we have hit that seventy-five for a hundred, um, and we remain seven, over seventy-five in our fourteen-day COVID nineteen. I wanna make sure the public understands, they may have seen, or they may have a child that's still attending in a small group, even in the high category. We can continue to serve small groups of students, um, in small groups or with a cohort. And the reason for that is we want to make sure that some of our students with disabilities have access, um, to, and to, to the education services. And so we currently have small groups of students on campus with their teachers, and we, um, I've been in some of those classrooms, and it is just a delight to see, um, to have, have students in our schools. And so, uh, right now, we're gonna remain on remote learning. We've committed to letting our public know that, um, if we look like there's gonna be a shift, that will let you know. But given the science right now, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we'll be leaving, uh, remote learning for a while anyway. And people are always coming to me and saying, we want exact dates, and I don't blame you. Um, I want an exact date too, but we really can't do it unless, you know, we can't give exact dates because we wanna be responsive. because we want to be responsive to the science that's around us. The next slide really talks about what's happening into what we're trying to do in Tacoma Public Schools, what we're looking at. So on October ninth, we let the Pierce County Health Department let us know that we're above that seventy-five per a hundred thousand threshold and that they will move us back into the high category if that, if that rate continues and goes up. As a county, we did hit that seventy-five. High still means we can, oops, I missed the wrong one. I need the Tacoma, the Tacoma County. It's the next one. Sorry about that. The next slide says about Tacoma. There we go. That's it. Nope, you skipped it. One back. Anyway, the Tacoma slide says, there it is. Tacoma Public Schools were averaging about three hun- three thousand nine hundred students in Tacoma online. And we're, we're, we're really excited. We believe that some of the bumps are out of there. Please, if you're still having trouble getting on that platform and using the Tacoma online, let us know. You know, email, you can email me and I'll get it to the right person to make sure that you can get over, you know, get over the hurdle that's blocking you. Our average daily attendance is eighty-nine point seventy-one percent. Enrollment, we've noticed that the enrollment across the district is down. And we contrib-, you know, that's contributed to a lot of things. Some people going to a different online system. We believe we've lost some families tracking back and forth. We certainly have some, have some families that have made a decision to go to homeschooling. So we just want you to know that that district enrollment is down. And that we know that there's a lot of factors and we'll, we'll get you a final number as soon as we have it. Internet access continues to be a challenge for some families. We really encourage families that don't have adequate internet to really contact our foundation for Tacoma students. Or you can call, you know, the, the office, you can, you can call, you can actually call my secretary and she'll get you in, in, in touch with the person who can help you get the internet. We have a lot of, a lot of folks that want to do it. They start, you know, they start the process, but they don't finish. We want to make sure that your student has the internet access that they need. You heard Ms. Padilla talk about Schoology and we want, we're trying to get those bumps out, but that's how you monitor your students' grades. So if your students are telling you there's no way to look at grades, know that that's the platform Schoology. And if you're having trouble with it, you know, let your principal know because that's the way we can get it solved. We, we know we had a mask issue. We're working through it. We still continue to get fit task, fit testing for our personnel. Everyone has a mask, but the ones that are required to wear an N ninety-five now have a cloth mask and a shield. And we're still working on making sure that all of our teachers are safe and that our students are safe in school. September meal counts were about forty-eight thousand a week. We're serving over twenty-three thousand students. And we just completed our first round of student conferences. And some of the feedback that we heard is, especially from the secondary level, is that a lot of the teachers and parents like the virtual conference on their own, no distractions, just you and the parent on the screen. So we're looking forward to going, you know, to going forward with that. The next slide is just other critical update. And so one that has to do with the free and reduced lunch. The Department of Agriculture, who really is the overseer of our school lunch program, announced that we will be able to serve free lunches till the end of, the end of school year twenty twenty-one. That is amazing and really helps us. And we're so glad that in Tacoma, we're able to serve the food needs of our students. But I'm going to, I want to say again that if you are struggling and we want you to get those free lunches, but make sure that you go in and apply for the free and reduced lunch application. They're online or you can call your principal and, and get one and make, or you can make an appointment to come into a kiosk. But it is really important. And some people think that the free lunch forms are just about free lunch, but that's not true. They are, that is the form that gets us the federal support and state support to the, a lot of the programming that we have in the district. And it, it may be paying for, you know, a support staff or a teacher in one of our classrooms. So please make sure that you get that done. There's still available spots in our community partner day camps. And these are day camps that we set up to help people who still need daycare because they, they're having difficulty juggling a job and this, and school. So let us know if you need that. And then we have some ELO digital pilots. That's for our, for some of our students. And it's going to launch on ten twenty-sixth and we believe it'll really help. And then don't forget to go and get your flu shot. That's important too. And then the last slide is just really, we just want, I just want everyone, our public to know that we really are paddling as fast as we can. And we're continuing to look at all the different cleaning options that we have and making sure that our PPEs, our masks and our sanitizers and our stations. And again, you know, we don't have students in the schools, but we're, we're able to practice now that we have these small groups of children. That we have teachers that are getting so creative and we've sent it to the board. The next board meeting, we need to have a video of some of the lessons that some of our teachers are doing that are unbelievable. And I sat in on a class at Downing, this, a class at Downing this week and a class at Larchmont. And okay, so here, here's, here's a part of not being, you know, not being in the trenches. But you know, a teacher, teacher had twenty students in her class. Well, guess what? You can't get twenty kids on the screen at one time. So she's always having to go back and forth, make sure she's getting all the students. So teachers, please let me tell you again, you're doing an incredible job. They're getting more and more creative every day. And what I love is that they're sharing their ideas. And so that they're picking up different things from, you know, from different people. And so we know we've got to be relentless. We've got teachers that are teaching television, television classes. We have kindergarten, first grade and second grade teachers who have students that don't have a computer. They're making home visits, drop off and calling them on the phone. We still are required to do our, I think that's a example of a deck and cover drill. We're still expect, we're still expecting to make sure our students, that make sure our students are safe and they are in school. And then the other thing is, is that we're still trying to make sure that we get learning packets for our kids to make sure that they have, you know, access to school. So school, it's different, but we still are in school. And thank you to every parent, grandparent. I was watching the classroom the other day where grandma, grandma was helping. Everybody is digging in and leaning in to get this work done. And we know it's not perfect. I don't want you to leave. I don't want people thinking I'm saying it's perfect. It's not. We have bumps. Let us know if you're struggling so we can help. So thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate the presentation and, and it's great to get the updates and, and encourage everyone, as the superintendent has said, encourage folks to connect with us if they're struggling rather than their neighbor or somebody else. Let us know so we can hand, we can address the issue. Thanks.
Director Leon? Any questions or comments?
Let me additional, just I think I really applaud the staff that are in, in the buildings or if you're teaching from home, where if you're teaching from, there's a lot of work and a lot of sacrifice being made. And it's easy to teach this way, it's a little way. So thank you very much, parents, teachers and students. For sticking through this and continue to improve it. Thank you.
Director Keating?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something that I, well, myself and Dr. Bra-, or Dr. Director Bonbright and I learned on the WASDA calls. So OSPI, and maybe there's someplace to have this linked somewhere, but there is a statewide data map on every public school, tribal school and charter school on where they are in remote learning and reopening. And you can look down to county, like it's a really, it's an interactive map. And they launched it, I think, early this month and it's going to be updated once a month. And so I was just navigating it a little bit today and it's really interesting. And I share that because I know there's a lot of people here that things are being done in other districts, but not our district. And why, why isn't that happening? And so I thought that it was a really, it's a helpful tool to figure out what really is happening and where. And so yeah, it's on the OSPI, OSPI website. So I just think that that might be a helpful thing for the, for families and, and community members to have access to.
Great. And I just have two questions slash comments. Oh, the one comment, I, I've watched a couple of the TV teachers lessons. I think they're really, and so just seeing how they set that setup in, in the boardroom too, it's just fun. So I appreciate that that is an option for receiving instruction for some of our students. And the one question I have is sort of a follow-up to the public comment we had tonight. Can you tell us a bit more about how, if at all, we are continuing to use hack or is it completely, are we sunsetting it overall? Over the course of the last couple of years, we made big pushes for student parents to get signed up for hack. And I know that people had done that. So can you tell us how the hack system will continue to be used, if at all? This, what people should expect in that regard? I don't know if we already have an FAQ that addresses this, but can one of you speak to that?
Josh, do you know, or Marie?
You bet. So this year will be a transition year. So the, no system has everything. And so there's, there's going to be elements that will evolve out of hack into Schoology. There are new features coming down throughout the system, a family app that's coming through. There's a student apps, like compass that are coming through. And so there will be, as, there will be this process where some of these things start to disappear and as new ones go on. And so to answer the question of why we waited specifically to start Schoology to the end of the year and why hack was still important is because remember those first few weeks, we were really trying to use what was familiar with the students from the spring, focus in on their SELs. So we will continue to use things like Microsoft Teams. That won't go away. But where students access their data will transition mostly out of hack over the course of time, but not immediately.
I think, I, I mean, I know you all already have plans for this, but just in terms of the communication, if families are wondering too, it seems like if, like a side by side of where, where you go for what, and maybe that's already available or it will be. But that's really helpful context for how things will be transitioned.
Okay.
And, and just Jasmine, I know you're there. I don't want to put you on the spot for every agenda item, but please feel free to use the hand raise function if you ever do want to chime in. So again, don't want to put you on the spot, but want you to feel free to chime in if you have input. Okay, moving on to number eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I motion to adopt.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item nine, policy matters. There are no policy matters tonight. Item ten, financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made available during regular business meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district's website at www.tacomaschools.org/department/budget/financialreporting. And see Ms. Medina, did you have a comment for us about financial things?
I do. Thank you. I don't have a report this evening, but we do have the monthly reports that are prepared and put on our website. This agenda item is typically reserved for our quarterly presentations. And so our next quarterly presentation will be in November, the, the only meeting we have in November. And, you know, in, in light of a question asked by Director Bonbright, we intend to start putting on the agenda, just a note that says when we will have our next meeting so that it's more clear to the public. And we haven't done a presentation for quite a while since February. And that was just due to COVID. We put all of that on restriction due to the, the emergency rules that we were operating under. So looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eleven, curriculum and instruction. There are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item twelve, business matters, twelve point one, approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one purchase orders to Washington State Employment Security Department for unemployment claims reimbursement.
Hi, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends approval of the purchase order for the Washington State Employment Security Department for total expenditures of one million five hundred thousand dollars during the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
Is there a motion to adopt item twelve point one?
I still move.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about item twelve point one? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting item twelve point one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you. Item twelve point two, approval of acceptance of homeless student stability education program grant OSPI.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director, just excuse me there, of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of the homeless student stability grant in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars in expenditure of funds in accordance with the accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Is there a motion to adopt item twelve point two?
I motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Item twelve point three, approval of acceptance of Title I Part A grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Title I Part A grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, in the amount of nine million, six hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines.
Is there a motion to adopt item twelve point three?
I still move.
Is there a second? Seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting item twelve point three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Item twelve point four, approval of acceptance of Title IX Part A Education for Homeless Children and Youth Grant.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Title IX Part A grant of the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars in expenditures, funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Is there a motion to adopt item twelve point four?
Motion to adopt.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting item twelve point four, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Item is adopted. Item twelve point five, approval of HomeSparks readiness to learn contract for the purpose of providing academic and non-academic support to students and families.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends the Board of Directors approve contract T S D dash twenty-one dash zero zero one in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Also, the Deputy Superintendent recommends the Superintendent be authorized to sign any contract with Hope Sparks to provide readiness to learn services funded by Learning Assistant Program dollars. Funding source, Learning Assistant Program Lab.
Is there a motion to adopt item twelve point five?
I motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting item twelve point five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item twelve point six, approval of acceptance of OSSI comprehensive school improvement grants from OSPI.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the OSSI comprehensive school improvement grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in expenditures of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Is there a motion to adopt item twelve point six?
Let's move, adoption of item twelve point six.
Your second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this item from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor of, well, I have one. How many schools are currently identified as comprehensive? You know, is that included in the?
Yes, so Larchmont, Lister, Jason Lee, Reed and Rosebelde Elementarys.
Yes, thank you. That was, that was included in the materials. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adopting the item?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Um, item number, sorry, I got off the screen. Um, item number 12.7, approval of contract between Puget Sound Educational Service District, ReLife School, and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2020-2021 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD 21 dash 019 between the Puget Sound Educational Service District, ReLife School, and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2020-2021 school year, funding or student services. Madam President, if I may, um, Director Leon asked some clarifying questions. Just to give a little bit of background, ReLife School is a cooperative school that's run by the Puget Sound Educational Services for Students with Special Needs. Um, and it serves a variety of school districts. It's right located right by River Road, right on Pialup. And so this contract allows us um, when an IEP team determines if it's appropriate to provide those services at ReLife School.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from members of the board?
I just have one thing to add. As a community partner, I've done some work at ReLife um, over the years, and the staff there do some incredible work. Um, I've been really impressed with um, just the way that they interact with students and the population that they work with, so.
Question. Um, and do they work with all age students and are they actually there physically with COVID right now? Yeah, there is.
Uh, there is various ages that are involved in there. And then um, as far as COVID, I don't know right off the top of my head, the um, if ebbs and flows, so um, it, I would say that uh, there are situations where I know that there have been kids on campus, but as far as today, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I think it's hard to keep track because we go through so many of these, but I think we went straight to comments. And I don't know that I called for a motion to adopt. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.7?
A motion to adopt.
There a second?
A second.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.7, say aye.
Aye.
A direct, Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, I realize that there's a typo in the contracts and between 12.7 and 12.8. And so what we will likely do, since the uh, the actual contract numbers are the same, you'll see. Um, so if we may, we might have to bring it back to you on a consent agenda, just to uh, correct the contract numbers.
Thank you for calling that out. Um, we'll look for it in the following agenda item if it's necessary to bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard ayes. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Item 12.8, approval of contract between Pialup School District and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 21 dash 019 between Pialup School District and the Tacoma Public Schools for September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.8?
Motion to adopt.
I motion. My second.
So moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? And we'll note the same um, consideration around the contract numbers as item 12.7. So um, with that caveat in mind, all those in favor of adopting item 12.8, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 12.9, approval of contract between Maxim Healthcare Services and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2020 through 2024 school years.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 21 dash 018 between Maxim Healthcare Services and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
I still move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions from the board? Um, and I see a hand from Director Leon, but before we go to that, I'll let um, Dr. Garcia give some comments. I think he has a hand up.
It was in response to an earlier uh, conversation and Director Leon and I had, so just a little explanation of what this was. So uh, if that's still the the question at call. So um, this it provides one-to-one care for students within the Tacoma Public Schools. So these are crucial uh, services. They could be around healthcare. They could be uh, a variety of nursing activities. Um, and so there, it is a a company that we have a long history with that provides those one-to-one services in when uh, it's appropriate due to a certain IEP individual education plan.
Thank you. Can you say in years, I don't, and I, I mean, I can't keep everything in my head up, but I don't remember the contract previously being four years long. Is this what we've done in the past or is this an extension of the timeframe for the contracts from beyond what we have done in the past?
These services, I don't, I will uh, get a direct answer to your question and uh, and get back to you, President Cobb. But these services are oftentimes uh, difficult uh, to secure. And so we, we, uh, when, when appropriate, we try to extend and have multi-year contracts that provide stability for our students, our staff. Um, it's great for the company because they can also provide stability within their workforce. And oftentimes, these are very um, services that provide are needed in a meaningful relationship. And so that's the reason why we search for these opportunities, but I will get you that directly in the historical perspective as well.
Thank you. Your answer for me triggers like the remembrance of a conversation of two years ago, maybe having the same conversation. So I appreciate that. Um, any other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.9, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 12.10, approval of Heartland Payment Systems contract for 2020-2025 for financial services, cash receipting, and online payment system.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Superintendent to award a contract to Heartland Payment Solutions for the purchase of a cash receipting and online payment system, funding source, general fund.
There a motion to adopt item 12.10?
Do it all.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 10.10, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13, other business, 13.1, board member appointment. Um, I'll let the General Counsel read and then share a couple of comments.
Thank you. The District's General Counsel recommends that the Board of Directors take a nomination for appointment of a board member to fill the vacant seat number three and vote uh, via roll call vote to fill the vacant vote board seat.
Thank you. I'll just remind members of the public that the board has been engaged in a process to identify and appoint a new school board member for position three, following um, former Director Hines's resignation that was effective August 30th. Typically, um, many of you know in the community that um, board members have to run and be elected to a six-year term. But when there is a vacancy that becomes available on the board, the current board members have the responsibility of appointing a new member to serve. And that member serves until the next regular election and they can decide to run. So I just want to share with the community that I think we collectively and individually take this responsibility very seriously. We know that it's a privilege to be in these seats and to have that appointment authority when it becomes necessary. So just in terms of process, the board um, put out applications for members who are, for members of the public who are interested in serving. We reviewed those applications um, and then identified members of the applicant pool who we'd like to interview. And now we're at the stage where the board has um, met to discuss um, the, our, our interpret, our feedback from those interviews and have now um, come to the point in the process where we make the final decision about who to appoint to serve in the context of this open public meeting. So with that as context, I will just, and and one additional point of context, in this appointment process, I just want to emphasize the fact that we are a body and we don't, individuals of us don't get to make any of these decisions alone. Um, many decisions that get made are based on a consensus, so um, and also one last point of context, I just want to thank everyone who submitted an application. Um, this is, we think it's in a very important role to serve in this seat to think about the education of all the kids in our community. We had a very strong applicant pool with many um, applicants who had deep longstanding commitments to working on behalf of the children in this community, serving students in all different capacities, some as teachers, some as parent educators, coaches, community partners. So we just thank you all for your interest in serving this role. And because there's only one seat available, that's um, we are only able to appoint one of you. But please keep in mind that there are elections coming up next year where um, there will be more um, positions available in board. So keep that in mind and keep in mind any other opportunity to serve because you are all excellent candidates. So with that in mind, um, I'll look to the board members and call for if there are any nominations um, for recommendations of a member to appoint to this vacant seat.
I'd like to nominate Corey Strozer.
Is there a second to that nomination?
I would like to second an nomination for Corey Strozer.
Now that there's been a nomination and a second, I'll call for a roll call vote on this nomination.
President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Bonbright?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
And Director Keating?
Aye.
The nomination passes 4-0. Welcome Corey Strozier.
This is exciting times for us. Like we were, we excited to welcome Corey to the team. Um, it will be nice again to be a full board of five. Um, and again, I just want to thank all the folks who applied to serve. Again, all the comments I made earlier stand. We had an excellent candidate pool, um, far better than we could ask for probably. But again, just appreciate all the interest and want to welcome Corey to the board, assuming he accepts. Like, but welcome Corey to the board. Okay, item 13.2, board annual goals for the 2020-2021s. Well, just backing up one step, go on item 13.1. Just want to note for members of the board, um, the new board member will be, will take the oath of office and begin his service on Thursday, November 12th. So that'll be the first meeting that we welcome our new board member. So moving on to item 13.2, board annual goals for the 2020-2021 school year.
The District's General Counsel recommends that the board publicly communicate its annual goals for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you. Do we actually take action on adopting these or is this just a communication?
It's just a communication.
Okay, so for the um, community's um, information, the board policy, I think it's 1810? Am I remembering that correctly? I should pull up the actual item. Board policy speaks to the fact that the board will adopt annual goals and objectives. These goals are separate from the district's larger strategic plan goals, but obviously align to helping to achieve those objectives. So these are goals, goals that the board holds itself accountable to on annual voices and helps us focus as we think about um, our success as a body and where we want to put our attention for the year at hand. So um, there's information included in this agenda item, but for the record, for the 2021-2022 school year, the board has identified the goals of racial justice and equity, social, emotional well-being and mental health, and family and student engagement as our three priority goals. So the board um, established these goals in a prior um, study session. And we initially brainstormed what were priorities to each board member. I think it was back in August. And this is our um, attempt to keep moving that conversation forward, to hone in on what these goals really mean and to establish some objectives around them. So the board, now having established these high-level goals, plans to meet in a future study session to continue to refine these and to establish some objectives that um, are aligned to these goals. But this is our first step in continuing to implement that policy of annual board goal setting. Any other comments from members of the board? Seeing none, I just, oh, go ahead, Director Leon.
So the community knows that there are uh, many other uh, goals and priorities that we have. And just because we didn't mention them in these three, doesn't mean that us and the rest of the district are not working on those other priorities that are also very important. So probably just important for everybody to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Um, I just look, like I said, look forward to continue the conversation with each of you about these goals and how we um, use them as anchors for other conversations that we'll have this year. Moving on to item number 14, no, 13.3, adoption of the 2021 Tacoma Public Schools legislative agenda. You're muted, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, the Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed 2021 legislative agenda.
I, you're, you're, you're muted.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 13.3?
I, I motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments about the legislative agenda from members of the board?
We did make uh, the adjustments that were presented at the study session that uh, were suggested. We went back and reviewed those and made those adoptions uh, into this agenda.
Um, Vice President Bonbright?
Yeah, I um, I'd like to to thank um, Director Keating and um, for all of her hard work on kind of spearheading this, the movement developing this and uh, and to Charlie Brown, our, our lobbyist, as well as his team and um, Dr. Garcia for their hard work in actually aligning our positions with our goals and objectives. And I love that, that in when, when we, when we have our legislative agenda, it says what are the goals that we're trying to achieve and how they align with our strategic plan. Um, and and I appreciate um, that there is a lot um, of critical, there are many, many critical issues facing the state coming up with COVID, and it's not going to be easy. But I think these are the ones that, that we feel most, most um, critical to the, to our ability to move forward with our strategic plan and our, and meeting the all needs and equity and all of the issues that we feel so strongly about in this economic and financial security of this, this um, school district. So thank you very much, um, Director Keating, for your hard work.
Any other comments from members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.3, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is adopted. We look forward to getting started early, trying to move these legislative priorities forward. And you know what, the thing I'll just say that I appreciate about this agenda, really, I never take, so it is incumbent on me and all of us to have the interest of Tacoma Public Schools at heart always. But for me personally, it's never to the detriment of students in any other part of the state. So I think that the items that we are asking that we move forward are in the best interest of students in Tacoma, but also are in the interest of meeting the needs of students across the state. So I always appreciate when we are pushing forward legislative priorities that are not about us. It's about what's best for kids across the state and meeting the needs around equitable access to support statewide. So appreciate um, the work on this and opportunities to engage in colleagues in Pierce County and other places to move forward policy items that really will benefit all of our kids. So item number 14, report to the board, 14.1, Benchmark Annual Safety Discipline.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, Director Lauren Allen is going to be joining us. And then Kevin, if you can go ahead and bring up the benchmark report. Uh, I just want to add a little context as before we get started. This, for those that are at home, uh, they we have not selected priority benchmarks for this year yet. So this is a carryover of last time's priority benchmarks. And so the staff is not presenting to you a priority benchmark. Uh, I think you're scheduled to look at those again on November 12th uh, for the five-year strategic plan. This would be uh, last year's discipline data um, that we'll be looking at tonight. And then of course, uh, if you choose to change your priority benchmarks, then we would be developing monitoring reports forward based off of those adopted priority benchmarks. Kevin, can you bring up the slides? And Laura, are you still with us or did you get, yep, I see you there.
Ready to go.
Just jump right in, Laura, and take us away.
Okay, great. Good evening. Uh, we are looking at discipline for the 2020 school year. And if we could advance the slide, please. This is part of Goal Four out of Health and Safety. This is part of Goal Four out of Health and Safety that all schools will create and maintain safe learning environments that promote academic achievement. Next slide. What we're looking at tonight for the priority benchmark is a discipline for grades three and five. The closer that we get to a hundred percent, the better, because this is positively stated as a percentage of students with no exclusionary discipline. For grade three, we're looking to hit ninety-seven percent. And for grade six, the goal, or grade five, the goal is ninety-six percent. A few notes before we dive into the data. The 2020, uh, numbers run from September through March. And then obviously we had our closure for COVID nineteen. And to be very clear, it is not the, uh, we are not, not counting the number of students that would have been suspended or expelled during that period, but rather students that had gone the entire year from September to March. And then for the first time had the potential to be, um, to receive exclusionary discipline during April, May, or June. Okay, the other thing, just a quick note, is that the state and local laws changed and we do now include exclusion, with exclusionary discipline are in-school suspension or ISS. Also still short-term and long-term suspensions as well as expulsions. So on the yellow bars, this is for grade three. Uh, the yellow bar in 2019 was at ninety-seven point one-five. I know that's really small on there. And for 2020, it bumped up just slightly at ninety-seven point four-one. Both of those years did hit the district benchmark of ninety-seven percent. In blue for grade five, uh, in 2019, we were looking at a ninety-four point eight-six percent of students that went through the year without exclusionary discipline. And in 2020, that improved by two points at twenty, at ninety-six point eight-eight, which hit the, uh, district benchmark goal of ninety-six percent. Next slide. We're taking a deeper dive here with grade three. And, uh, we're breaking it down by student group. And what you'll notice is not much change from the year prior. Uh, we do see our biggest movement for our Native American students who improved just over four percent. Next slide, please. And for fifth grade, uh, when we look at the student groups, our largest movement was with our black students where, uh, that improved eight and a half percent. Uh, we also saw a bump up for special education students at three point nine percent. Next slide. So overall, the key findings, the percentage of students with no exclusionary discipline for, uh, grade three and grade five improved in both. Eighteen of our student groups showed improvement compared to the end of the year of 2019. Now for grade three and grade five, they both had seven out of the twelve student groups that met or exceeded the district goal of ninety, uh, their district goals at each respective grade. And for this data of the priority benchmark is grade three and five, but we do include in the appendix secondary data. And you'll notice in that data for our secondary schools, there are forty-eight student groups and all of those student groups improved. Uh, some of them, uh, had a considerable bump to the positive. And once again, that is an unusual configuration for September through March due to COVID. Next slide. Okay, I have two slides here on next steps. The first one breaks down, um, the things that have already been completed since we, since I last presented on discipline, which honestly feels almost like a lifetime ago at this point. Um, so we look at educators that participated this summer, and that's both staff and administrators, professional growth around equity. And this was expertly done by Justina Johnson and the, uh, talented team of educators that she assembled. Uh, we also during the closer had SEL lessons. We created those for families, for secondary students and for elementary students. This summer, uh, we purchased SEL curriculum for all elementary schools. Also, staff received two and a half hours of training on that new SEL curriculum. And at the secondary level, staff completed an hour and a half of SEL training. And this, uh, pushed really hard, focused strongly on building relationships, those connections from student to student, teacher to student, which is such a key component of trauma-sensitive practices, of being culturally responsive, um, kind of at the core of all we do. Administrators were trained on SEL and discipline data, uh, not only during the summer, but also, uh, Zeke Edman, Tammy Larson, and, um, Tua Met led great monthly sessions with deep dives into discipline data and looking at getting to the root causes of disproportionality and some, um, alternatives to exclusionary discipline. And then the final bullet point there, social emotional learning action plans are now included in our CAPS Plan, which is Tacoma's version of the school improvement plan. And those are driven by climate survey data. And what I love about this is that it's students reporting on how they perceive their SEL journey is going. It's not adults saying, here's where you are at in self-management. It's students getting to say, this is where I am. Um, also, discipline data has been incorporated into the CAPS Plan, um, in 2020. Okay, next slide. And then, uh, these are things that are on the horizon. Here's what we have up and coming. So social emotional learning, we're taking all of that, that great new curriculum for, uh, elementary schools, and we are customizing it to deliver remotely. So we're creating PowerPoints to make it easier for teachers to share. Um, also just this week, we began four cohorts for Restorative Justice Academy. And, uh, that's really exciting. This is an intensive eight-week program for, uh, restorative justice. And I talk about restorative justice and social emotional learning because both of those are proactive. We're getting at the heart of building skills and relationships and accountability and just, um, getting to ahead of any discipline issues and, and creating those relationships to respond when something does happen. Because kids make mistakes, adults make mistakes, we're human, uh, it's just part of our lives. Okay, and then finally, we, we like to have a tiered support system. We know some students are going to need some extra support. And so we're here for them. Uh, we have an early warning system where we're looking at what we call the ABCs. So attendance, behavior would be discipline, and C for coursework or grades, um, as well as, uh, extraordinary work from counselors around depression, anxiety, trauma, social skills, some great, uh, brief work for them as well, for kids that need that extra mental health support. You are all caught up now on discipline from last year.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Are there questions or comments from members of the board? Director Bonbright?
Laura, thanks so much for the presentation. It's always, uh, it's always joyful to see that the numbers are going in the right direction. Um, and I, um, big believer in social emotional learning and the restorative justice process. So I'm hoping, um, that, that the investment we've made in the past is really actually a lot of the piece that's driving this. Um, having said that, uh, well, two things. First of all, you'll notice that we picked social emotional learning as, um, as a big piece of, it's one of our priority, um, priority goals for this year. So we'll be talking with you more about how we can, um, augment our knowledge of what could and is possible and what we're planning to do and what we could do to help, um, drive the policies that you and your team need to make sure this happens. Um, and then I guess secondly, and this is sort of my question, is, um, since, since March, we've been in this COVID situation. We've had a, a tough, long summer and now we're, you know, doing this, you know, kind of uphill climb through, uh, online remote learning for the beginning of school. Um, how, and I know you don't, probably don't have any answer to this, but I'm just going to sort of pose, you know, how are we tracking and figuring out, and the discipline issues aren't going to be on school property, but are there other ways of tracking and trying to figure out how kids are doing? And I know you spoke a little bit about, about, you know, counselors and folks reaching out, but maybe you could talk a, um, a little bit about, that was last year. What are we doing, you know, through the summer and this year to make sure that kids' social emotional learning is really the crux of what parents are most concerned about now, and so I'd like to, to address that and see if you have any thoughts on what the team's doing to reach out and, and connect with kids. Yeah, I really appreciate that question. So, uh, one part of that, as part of the reopening plan for, um, OSPI, we were asked to implement at the beginning of the school year, a needs assessment, or what they call a universal screener. And we're taking a look at strengths-based, how they're doing, um, with their own mental health, their mental well-being, as also some basic needs. So our schools have been implementing that, um, assessment to take a look and see, hey, who needs some extra support from counseling? Um, who needs some extra support for food at home or a hotspot in the home? Um, you know, what, where are our kids at? And how do we know if they need help? So, um, that's been really helpful for, uh, our schools. And then in addition to that, uh, the SEL we've kept ongoing. So we had it going through the summer and we have it, um, made sure that it was accessible for families and intended for families and, um, brought in secondary. It, uh, kept the training going over the summer and, you know, the whole child teams are out there working with, you know, whole child teams are still happening at schools. And we have coaches still working with those teams to get down to the basics and, uh, find out what is needed to move forward. So it's not perfect. Sometimes there's some barriers reaching students. Um, it's not as easy as we would like to get in touch with everyone. Um, but we're, we just have staff that cares so deeply. They're, they find a way. Thank you.
Just add a few other things, Director Bonbright. Uh, so the DART team is, you know, the Tacoma Whole Child Team is, is kind of the, the heartbeat of the, the SEL work, but then there's a variety of teams that are, uh, providing support. So the DART team is continuing to work on our Compass app, which is our, uh, app that students will be able to track some of their SEL goals, uh, their goal-setting, a variety of other factors. So that'll give us some data as, as kids are moving through there. Uh, Director Allen's working with her team to say what other SEL data is out there that we can collect. Um, and that's going to be an important feature. And there's a fine line between, um, someone else measuring somebody's SEL skills versus the student measuring. And so we're having a difficult time and we keep on pushing that limit to say, so how can we give students the best tools to measure theirs? And then as Director Allen mentioned, uh, in, uh, Superintendent mentioned, I was in some classrooms this week, had some wonderful experiences. Our classroom teachers are just doing a bang-up job with simple strategies, zones of regulation, asking kids why, where they are. Uh, I won't share all the stories, but just some, you know, kids are, are expressing themselves because they have a high-level trust in their teachers. And, you know, they're telling and being pretty vulnerable, even in some of our team's meetings. Um, and so that's good data that we're able to collect. And then the counseling teams and support teams are able to follow up with students as well.
Well, thanks to all of you. I, I know it's, uh, it's been a challenging year and I think, um, I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled to know we had a head start, um, on this because we were already focused on it. And so I think we were more ready than maybe some districts that hadn't, hadn't dived into, um, SEL and restorative justice yet. So, thank you. Thank you.
I want to go next to Jasmine. I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, so I'm a part of the Restorative Justice Council at my school, which is just a team of students, um, and teachers who work on moving away from punitive punishments and more on, like, I guess, healing, um, and bringing students back into the community. Um, and I don't know if I missed it in the presentation, but what are like the alternatives that are being put in place rather than punitive punishments like, um, expulsion or suspension? Cause I know that we're trying to work on like author and author victim circles. And I was just wondering if there were any other alternatives that maybe I just like missed or, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're really getting at the heart of it, that, uh, we want to shift away from punitive because we know the studies show that that, i- if, if suspending a student worked, we wouldn't, we would never need to suspend another student, right? It, it just doesn't work. Um, the studies show that. So what's the alternative? So we move and lean in into building relationships. And we create those caring, um, communities that you're a part of, Jasmine. Um, we create accountability circles where students keep their dignity. It's a two-way conversation. It's not a shame. It's a, um, learning and it's a, uh, very human making mistakes and then making it right and having a chance to make amends for that and take accountability for it and leaving with honor. Also that active participation in making things right rather than passively being told a punishment. It's harder. Um, uh, it's harder for everyone and, um, it pays off in the long run, but it is an investment upfront. And, um, I'm really proud at schools for embracing it. And it's a change in practice, um, to be able to, uh, leave something that you've known for, uh, and move into new territory with embracing, uh, restorative practices.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Director Keating, any comments?
Um, well Jasmine brilliantly asked what I was going to ask, so thank you Jasmine. Um, and Laura, thank you for the presentation. Um, and I just want to give, um, credit to the counselors because I know that the work that they put in, um, this wouldn't happen without our counselors. And so I just want to give them a huge shout out, um, because they're heroes to me. So thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
Any comments or questions, Director Leon?
Sure, thanks for, um, just bringing up the importance of moving away from the negative side of punitive punishment, um, and how important that is in all places in learning and in life. So, it'd be, uh, it's, it was great to see those, you know, in your appendix there, those numbers going down for, uh, the sixth, um, eighth grade numbers, um, you know, came down ten percent for the sixth grade numbers, and eight percent for, no, ten percent for the sixth grade, um, numbers and like ten percent also for the eighth grade, maybe five and two for the ninth, twelfth grade or so. There's improvement. I think, uh, as you said, um, and we're, we're, someone had said we're online now, so maybe we don't know what is all going on in everyone's personal life and their emotions. Um, and discipline issue sometimes is a, is a, a sign, you know, we have symptoms and signs, but all this is caused by something, um, a cause. It's not a, I work in medicine, it's not always a disease, a condition. Uh, so we want to try to, uh, prevent or improve that condition to, to give everybody those skills to be able to, um, work with each other in a collaborative way and, and learn, um, the soft skills, they call them, but they're so important, you know, more important than the hard skills that we spend a lot of time on, uh, to become great, uh, great contributing adults. So thank you for your help on this.
Thank you.
I'll just say that, um, I think we continue to make really good progress in this area. Um, but I'll always keep bringing back the disparities by race and by students with disabilities that I just hope to keep continuing to shrink. But I think it's easy to lose sight of where we come from. So I just want to remind folks, not necessarily you all, but just people who might be listening, that there have been significant changes in both state law and our pop, practice and policies at, as a district in the last several years. And a lot of the largest disparities in outcome, discipline outcomes by race and by, um, students disability status were connected to more subjective forms of discipline. So I think it's an important reminder around context that some of that more subjective, um, uh, some of the more, some of the suspensions and expulsions that were associated with more subjective behaviors aren't allowed even anymore. So these outcomes that we're seeing around discipline and suspensions and expulsion probably reflect a little bit more serious, um, um, situations or behaviors that are a little bit more objective. So as we talk about that though, I think, and as we think forward about what our priority benchmarks look like moving forward and what the presentation of data looks like moving forward, I'm really curious at the middle school level in particular, to know like what categories of behaviors, um, these suspensions and expulsions are falling into and wondering like if there are, um, strategies beyond some of the social emotional learning and restorative justice approaches that we could be thinking about or that you are thinking about, um, to respond to the kind of categories of behaviors that these suspensions and expulsions can, that continue are more associated with. Direct, um, Dr. Garcia?
No, I really appreciate what you just said, President Cobb. No, I really appreciate what you just said, President Cobb. And, you know, Director Allen, General Counsel Eric Hogan did a lot of work under your guys' previous guidance, right, to revise our discipline practice. There are councils that review appeals. I think that one thing is, is our culture is really, in the Tacoma Public Schools, is really shifted to understand is, you know, kids make mistakes. Sometimes they're pretty significant. Sometimes discipline is appropriate for, I won't get into any of the details. And so we all have to continue to remember that what we're trying to do is create a culture that that doesn't have to define the student for the rest of their educational career, the rest of their life. And so these strategies of restorative justice, even if there's a discipline practice that are, an incident that needs to take place are so critical to the healing process to say, this doesn't have to define you. And the whole child movement is those wraparound supports so that it's not the defining moment. As a kid that got in trouble, you know, you'd be surprised on how alone it feels sometimes to be a kid out there, and, you know, you know you made a mistake. What you want to try to do is work through that. And so we might always have discipline. It's what we do with that information and that data that's going to define us as a community and an organization. So I appreciated your comments.
Yeah, and to build on that, I just think too, as we continue to evolve our culture, there's still going to be some legacy remembrance of what it used to be. So I think it's important for people to know that it's not like the old defiance and disrespect that kids are getting suspended for. It's kind of like these, a different set of categories of behaviors that we might be seeing. Because I do think people might continue to associate some of these practices with that previous culture.
Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, and just to build on that one comment there too, and on the other side of that, there are situations where kids are not acting safe and other students are, need to be safe. And so we are not saying that to all those families or those students as well, that it's a free-for-all. We are saying that we're looking at each one of those situations, and we're going to continue to move forward in a positive light. So I just want to make sure folks hear that at home as well to say, you know, we're not, we're not saying that every kid won't be suspended.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Justina, and thank you, Ms. Allen, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we reached the coast of the closer meeting. So item 15 announced, we have future board meetings Thursday, November 12. We'll meet at 6:00 PM for our regular business meeting. And again, that will be the meeting where we appoint our new member to serve. Thursday, November 19, at 6:00 PM, we'll meet for our study session. And Thursday, December 10, we'll meet for our regular business meeting at 6:00 PM. Then Thursday, January 14, at 6:00 PM, we'll meet for our regular business meeting. Item number 16, are there, we have more comments and reports. I'll start with Jasmine. Any comments or reports tonight?
Yeah, so my school, Sammy, we had our first like all-school event virtually. And so we had a student talent showcase where students submitted videos of themselves showcasing something that they wanted to, you know, share with the entire school. And we watched it during our mentor group period. It was like a live event. And yeah, we got really good feedback, and so we're excited to try and organize more events like that and probably continue with student showcases throughout the year. And our next event is going to be like a slideshow of students submitted pictures or videos of themselves in like Halloween costumes just because Halloween's not really so much happening this year. And we just thought it would be like a fun thing to do and still a way to stay connected with everyone. Yeah.
Thank you for the report. Did you, wait, as a follow-up, did you submit a video?
No, but I was part of like the people doing transitions, so I was in the video. Oh, and I forgot one more thing. It's not really a report necessarily, but seniors are starting to get information about cap and gown and like graduation. And I know there's still a lot of worry and just uncertainty about what a virtual graduation is going to look like. So the senior class is a little stressed, a little worried like everyone, but yeah.
Vice President Bonbright?
Okay, so I've got just a couple of things to talk about today. One of them is the Joint Municipal Action Committee, which is the group of the six entities that have, that are made up of elected officials in their state, the Port of Tacoma, Tacoma Public Schools, Metro Parks Tacoma, City of Tacoma, Pierce County, and the Puget Tribe. It's a council of two members from each of those organizations, and we get together regularly, monthly, and sometimes more to talk about collectively how we're approaching issues facing our community. And I think I've mentioned before that during COVID, we've been having weekly calls, not JMAC, but just local elected officials have been having weekly calls. And then we brought that back to JMAC last month and started talking about more directly how we can be more planful. And so we're working on a project, which we should know a little bit more about after next month's meeting, where we're going to be hopefully taking a look, a collective look and a focus on how we can move forward on COVID issues with, through an equity lens, on designing and redesigning how we provide services to the community, social services and financial services and, you know, economic services. So it's pretty exciting and thrilled to be part of that. The second piece is that actually Director Keating and I participated in the National School Board Association, invited several board members from different districts all across the nation to participate in a focus group, a national focus group on COVID challenges and equity. And that was very interesting, actually, to be part of that conversation at a national level with people from all over the country. And what struck a point for me was how different your perspective was on the challenges, depended entirely on where you lived in the country. Because it wasn't even so much if you were from a big district or a small district, it was more just geographically, where were you based? And so were you remote because of COVID? Or were you actually trying hybrid? Or were you full-on back in person? And that was a fascinating conversation. So just wanted, I'm sure Director Keating may have other comments about that, but it was an enlightening opportunity and nice to talk to people from other parts of the country that have started the remote, where they went then to hybrid. So that's our next step, and talking to people that have already gone through that and the headaches and the challenges that they had and some of the solutions that they provided. So that was an interesting conversation. So that's it this month.
Thank you, Director Leon. Any comments or reports tonight? Okay. Director Keating?
Yeah, I will just piggyback a little bit on what Vice President Bonbright was talking about on that national focus group. I think the thing that I took away from that conversation was, and I don't remember, I think I had, the group I was in, there was probably nine states that were represented. And we, the consistency of access and the limitation of access to food, transportation and connectivity and devices, like it was very consistent throughout the country, which I think is really telling. So I thought that was an interesting takeaway. And my only other comment is a little bit on a selfish side, but I've been reflecting a lot. So it's my first official meeting when it's my kid's birthday or on my kid's birthday. And I have been thinking a lot about former President Scott Hines and all the, and I know, you know, everyone else on the board and past board members and even staff that are on these meetings on a regular basis. I just think I want to acknowledge our families for supporting us and maybe not happily if it's their birthday. My daughter did want to email President Cobb and the superintendent to ask for a hall pass for her mom, but I said no. But I just wanted to acknowledge, I know that, you know, these meetings can go long. There's a lot of work that goes into them, and a lot of us have families. And so I just want to, I think, honor our families for supporting us while we are doing this work.
Thank you for doing the work. And I'd just say again, like, I was kind of being, I know that Scott Thomas has a new puppy in her family, so it was nice to hear the puppy barking back. But I really do think that this time of COVID has kind of changed norms a little bit. While we meet virtually, it would have been nice to see Stella's face even to say a happy birthday if she wanted that. So please wish her a happy birthday from us and thank her for sharing you with us. I don't have any real comments tonight, but to just say that Director, Vice President Bonbright's comments and your comments about engaging with the National School Board Association and getting to talk with members from across the country. When I've had those opportunities, I always feel really privileged almost in ways that we do, I think, in Washington State, have a pretty good education policy framework. I think there can always be improvements. We talk a lot about funding issues and some things, but we have active and engaged legislators who want our education system to be better. And I just remember having conversations with school board members in other countries who are just having to battle the most basic things around access and equity in education. So I'm sure that you all took away some good lessons learned, but probably too, came away feeling like, oh, we've got it together in some ways that other folks just don't have the benefit of, given some other policy and political structures that are in place. So I don't have any further comment, but just appreciate you two staying engaged with both WADA here in Washington and engaging at the national level with our colleagues. Director Leon?
Hey, yeah, I just want to, you mentioned this earlier, but I just want to congratulate Cory, our new board member, of course, we're excited to have you. And really, the other folks that we interviewed, and the folks, even if we didn't interview you, they were all very strong folks that can still help us on committees and focus groups and stay involved with us. So we just had a spot for one, that they stay involved. We've got other folks that didn't apply, so we need your help to make education better and stronger. And it's just a reminder for folks to vote. It's really important to vote and make sure you educate yourself on issues. And if you feel like you're in a bubble, you only hear one side of one thing all the time, look to the other side, look for friends and people that are maybe not in your bubble, and incorporate lots of thoughts as you make your decisions. Not just on voting, but on how you act kindly to all folks in this world. Thanks.
With that, we'll move on to item number 17, and we'll adjourn our regular meeting. But just as a reminder, as noted on the top of the agenda, the board will resume a meeting and executive session. So thanks to the members of the public who've tuned in tonight. And please do take a second look at the new guidance for offering public comment. We'll try to keep improving that process as we move forward. But thanks for your input and feedback, we appreciate it. With that, we are adjourned.